Meeting's starting now. It is 5:01, 5:02. It is now 5:02, October 2nd, 2018. And I call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. And the City Council seating as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the City as Housing Assets Accessor. May we have roll call, please?
Mr. Cox?
Here.
Ms. Gomez?
Present.
Mr. Kennedy? Mr. Negretti? Mayor Garcia? Mr. Negretti absent.
This is the time and place for the general public to address the City Council on any item listed or not listed on the agenda per Government Code Section 549-54.3. State law prohibits the Council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The Council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. I don't know if we have anyone that would like to address the Council at this time. Is anyone here wanting to address the Council?
Hi Diane.
Did you want to address the Council? At this time?
On anything in particular, or?
Well, if there's anything that you, or you want to wait till the six?
I'm gonna come back in.
At 6 o'clock?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. May we have declaration of closed session items by our City Attorney now, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We have two items this evening. They are related. They are anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9D2. Pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9E1, the facts and circumstances are not necessarily known to the potential plaintiff in this matter. One is, Item A is on behalf of the City Council. Item B is on behalf of the Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency. To the extent there's reportable action related to these items, we will report it either at the conclusion of the closed session or immediately at the commencement of the 6 o'clock meeting.
Thank you. At this time, we will recess to our closed session, yeah, to our closed session and then our regular session convenes at 6:00 PM. Victorville. And the City Council seating as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the City as Housing Assets Accessor. May we have roll call, please?
Mr. Cox?
Here.
Ms. Gomez?
Present.
Mr. Kennedy? Mr. Negretti? Mayor Garcia?
Here.
Mr. Kennedy and Mr. Negretti absent.
At this time, may we have closed session announcements by our City Attorney, please?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We had two closed sessions this evening. We had two closed sessions this evening pursuant to Government Code 549-56.9D2, anticipated litigation. Item A was on behalf of the City Council. Item B, on behalf of the Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency. And the information related to that is set forth on the agenda. At this time, there is no reportable action with respect to either item.
Thank you. The invocation this evening will be delivered by Pastor Gregory Winston of Life Church. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Police Chief Rick Bessenger. Please stand.
Our heavenly Father, it's in the name of Jesus Christ we come. We thank you for this evening, Father God. We thank you for Mayor Garcia. We thank you for the chamber members, Father God. We ask you for your wisdom and your knowledge and understanding to be in this meeting, Father God. And may we take heed, Father God, to the plans that you have for Victorville, Father God, and the cities around. May your will be done, Father God. May they work together, pray together, Father God. May you give them wisdom, Father God, to answer questions. But it's you, Father God, that you give us power and wisdom to do your will here in Victorville. So let thy will be done, Father God, in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible)
We have the swearing-in of Battalion Chiefs David Hernandez, Moses Neal, and Ron Myers, and Training Captain DeJuan Washington by Fire Chief Greg Benson. And after that, I will present a proclamation to Inger Robertson with a Better Way Domestic Violence. So the swearing-in will come first.
I solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Inger Robertson, please come forward and join me. On behalf of the Victorville City Council, I am honored to present you with this proclamation. of Victorville. We call on all citizens of Victorville to join in the effort to end domestic violence. I would also like to recognize a Better Way Domestic Violence Shelter and Outreach for 30 years of compassionate, dedicated assistance to victims of domestic violence in the high desert. Thank you for your service to our community, and congratulations. I will just read the last paragraph here. Now that, uh, let me see, where is it? Whereas on October 13, 2018, and October 14, 2018, in appreciation of 30 years of compassionate, dedicated service to better women and children, and in recognition of Domestic Violence Awareness Month, the A Better Way Domestic Violence Shelter and Outreach Organization is hosting a candlelight vigil and walk to end domestic violence, to mourn those lives lost to domestic violence. Celebrate those who survived, and connect us as a community to continue spreading the message and work to end domestic violence. I'm very touched by this because I lost my granddaughter to a crime. Now therefore, I Gloria Garcia, Mayor of the City of Victorville, do hereby join the other members of the Victorville City Council in recognizing Domestic Violence Awareness Month and applauding the 30 years of service of A Better Way Domestic Violence Shelter and Outreach, and urging our citizens to make a difference to one child, one woman, or one family who suffers from the pain of domestic violence. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cast the official seal of the City of Victorville to this affixed here to this second day of October 2018, Gloria Garcia, Mayor of the City of Victorville. Congratulations for all the wonderful work that you are doing. We really do appreciate it, and you know that my heart's there with you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. For the 30 years, we've helped over 31,000 local residents. Just this last year, 208 used our shelter. So, thank you very much.
You are so welcome for all the work that you do, and the lives that you save. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I will have our City Clerk present the agenda to Council, and any revisions to the agenda.
The City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Persons who wish to address the Council on a specific item or any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards located in the Council Chamber's lobby and give it to the City Clerk prior to the meeting. The Mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to Government Code Section 549-54.3, state law prohibits the Council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The Council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments made during the public hearings, written communications, or public comment sections of the agenda are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less, as deemed necessary by the Mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the City Council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any persons or groups who interferes with the conduct of the City Council meeting by willfully interrupting and/or disrupting the meeting is subject to removal. A peace officer may be requested to assist with the removal should any person or group fail to comply with an order of removal by the Council. Any person or group who resists removal by a peace officer is subject to arrest and prosecution pursuant to California Government Code Section 549-57.9, Penal Code Section 403. Thank you for your cooperation. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the Council. Thank you, Mayor Garcia.
This evening, we do not have any appeal hearings. So we move on to public hearings. First item, B1. Staff request for continuation of a public hearing to hear arguments for and against the approval of a notice of exemption for storm drain improvements for the Seneca and Hesperia Road projects. Madam Clerk, please read the recommendation.
That the City Council open the public hearing, take any testimony, and continue the public hearing to the October 16, 2018 regular City Council meeting.
Thank you. You Council members have any questions of staff at this time?
Yes, so I have, I've made up these questions so that you can follow along what I've done. Some of you already have them, and if you want to copy, you can just pick one up. It's right here. You're free to follow. So for storm drains improvement, I have is, what is the process of the public hearing? And this is for the City Attorney. Who are the staff members who decided to continue this item to October 16th? And what are the pressing issues for the continuance? And when did staff become aware of the desire to continue this item? What storm drains are in the plans for this item to be improved? What are the costs? What other storm drains are in the CIP as proposed in the project areas for the budget year 1918-19 to improve? And has Charles Chuck Bouquet, a 20-year-plus contractor for risk management and safety consultant services for the City of Victorville, applied for the California Office of Emergency Services to the Federal Emergency Management Agency for Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, funding a project that would involve storm drain improvements on Pebble Beach Drive and Hughes Road to prevent future flood damage from overland runoff during the heavy rains? Mr. Bouquet, how many more lives shall we continue to let die before we are interested in the lives of residents like Mr. Williams? Former City Manager Robertson stated that you were good at lowering insurance rates. When will you become good at pleading to your boss, the City Manager, the importance of the lives and the price of them? Has the City analyzed the in-house staff, if they are compatible to conduct and oversee such risks managements, including processing liability claims and litigation management? Those are my questions.
Madam Mayor and members of the Council, those questions are questions that appear to just have been circulated. There were quite a few, and I'm not exactly sure that, as I understood them, they completely connected to the subject matter before the Council. But notwithstanding that, certainly, staff will take the opportunity to review all the questions, most of which we're not prepared to respond to at this time, but certainly can prepare a response as a follow-up.
I'm sorry, I'm asking for a response here. I have two minutes to ask questions, and you don't have any timeline. I don't know why you continue to take the authority and discretion to continue to single me out. I've asked for this document to be exposed to the people.
Ms. Gomez, will you please allow our manager to continue with his explanation?
To continue to ask these questions, and you're denying by saying that you're gonna do it behind closed doors. You've canceled, you've canceled already four meetings that I have with you, so that these questions do not get responded. Now you're saying that you're gonna set them aside when I cannot sit and meet with staff members to get these responses? I need the responses, as I have two minutes, and I have used my two minutes. So I need you to respond to my questions, and I've provided the copies of these questions. One day to read an agenda, because you have decided that I have no access within 72 hours to get my agenda items? I got it on Monday. I read it in one day, and I prepared the documentation. You continue to abstain from not allowing me to represent the people, and I'm not gonna allow you to continue to do that. So I'm looking for answers, and they're right here.
I think what you just gave me right here, as you pointed, are actually questions. I think you're seeking answers, which I'm willing to offer if you provide or allow staff to provide the time to go through them. There seems to be several pages there. I'd like to have the opportunity to understand the questions and be able to respond appropriately with the best answers available.
When will you be responding in the next Council meeting? Because I want these also to be publicized, because you continue to delay any questions that you have.
Ms. Gomez, your two minutes are up.
I'm sorry, but you keep interrupting me.
Well, this is pertaining to Hesperia Road, Seneca and Hesperia Road.
You're not supposed to interrupt, and you continue to interrupt me.
Well, you're interrupting.
I have the right to request what I'm requesting. You guys have stopped my accessibility from getting the agenda 72 hours beforehand, okay? I received it on a Monday, and this is not the first time. And I'm not going to allow this to continue. And you have voted on that, and the City Attorney, I've told him twice, I don't know what he's gonna do about it, but this is not anything that allows me to represent the City of Victorville.
At this point, your two minutes for asking questions is up. I will answer your quick question about the public hearing process. This is very simply an issue related to a notice of exemption, which is a SEQA document. SEQA guidelines provide the requirements for public hearings. Usually, it's a 10-day notice requirement. The City complies with all those requirements.
If I might, Madam Mayor, whatever the questions are, they're going to be answered prior to the public hearing concluding. This is, recommendation is to continue this to the next meeting. And so, whatever the questions are, they'll all be answered by the staff or the attorney.
And that could happen prior to the close of the public hearing if you have a motion to continue the public hearing at this point.
Do we need a motion to continue?
Well, you're going to open the public hearing and leave it open.
Yes, we should open the public hearing first and then have a motion to continue.
Did you have any other questions, Jim?
No, because they'll be answered at the next meeting.
At this time, I open the public hearing. I do not have any speaker cards. This public hearing will be continued to October 16, 2018.
We should have a motion and a vote on that.
Now I need a motion in a second.
I saw move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Mr. Kennedy, Mr. Negretti being absent, and Ms. Gomez voting no.
This item will be continued to October 16, 2018.
As a point of order, do we need the majority to be here to be able to continue every single item that is here? That's a legal question for the City Attorney.
The voting requirement changes depending on the matter before you. This has been continued pursuant to a 2-1 vote.
Which means?
It'll be heard on the 16th. The public hearing is still open.
Is that considered a majority vote, or is that?
That is a majority vote of the quorum, correct.
Majority vote of the quorum, which is?
Three people.
I will continue. Item B2, a public hearing to hear arguments for and against the approval of a notice of exemption and award of a contract to Eleknor Belko Electric, Inc. in the amount of $155,494 for the Phantom West Street Lighting Project. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council approve the notice of exemption and award a contract to Eleknor Belko Electric Incorporated in the amount of $155,494 for the Phantom West Street Lighting Project.
Okay, this is a point of order. We are no longer sticking to our policy handbook. We ask questions, and then we go ahead and do comments. Have we steered away from that? Because that's what it seems like to me, and if not, you can correct me if I'm wrong.
I don't even think we're there yet. I think the Mayor has just asked for the introduction of the item. The City Clerk is introducing the item. I suspect the City, the Mayor will then follow up with basically questions to the Council members and then open the public hearing.
Thank you.
So we are right now on the opening of the public hearing, is that correct?
No, we haven't even gotten to that point yet. We're just having the City Clerk explain what the item is.
Okay, thank you.
I will now ask Council members if they have any questions of staff. I'm following the order.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask the same question, because I know it wasn't understood. What item are we on?
B2.
Exactly, okay. So I'm going to re-ask the question again, for the sake of understanding. If we are not continuing to follow the policy, we ask questions, we open, we close, and then we ask comments. We did not do that for Item B1. We went ahead, skipped over the comments, and now we're on Item B2. And so what I'm expecting is for us to continue to follow that policy, and if it's not, then how is it that we're gonna have any kind of order in this city hall?
Will you please listen? I was in order. You're the one that didn't even know what item we were on.
Sorry, but...
On Item B1, the hearing has been continued. You will have ample opportunity to ask all of your comments and questions at the continued public hearing when it's open.
But in the...
Since the public hearing hasn't even been closed yet, it wouldn't be appropriate to start having Council member comments, because you haven't heard the comments from the public.
Okay, so that's what we adopted in our policy, because now we just switched the game up. We're calling it public hearing, and we're saying in public hearing, we're not allowed to have any comments. That's what you just, I'm sorry, he's...
No, that's not what I said. I said at the close of the public hearing...
What did you say? I'm sorry, can you please be quiet? As a point of order, I'm asking the City Attorney right now to reclarify.
At the close of the public hearing, Council members will be asked for their comments. The public hearing will be continued to the 16th. At the end of the public hearing on the 16th, you can ask your comments, provide your comments.
So in other words, comments are not allowed to be asked under the public hearing, is that correct? That's what I heard you say.
Members of the public can ask, have comments.
Okay, but not...
You are talking about Council member comments. The time for that is after the close of the public hearing.
Okay, so in other words, I was supposed to be able to ask for public comments, and it wasn't rendered?
No, that's not what I said.
What's wrong with you tonight?
No, I'm asking for clarification.
I just clarified it. You asked?
Can you please stop? We need order here, okay? Stop. You need to stop, okay? If you don't stop, we're gonna recess right now. We are out of order right now, and you're not helping this conversation. I have the right to speak. So if you don't be quiet, you're gonna be asked to step out and not be a part of it for 15 minutes. So please stop. I'm sorry, I'm not able to understand what's happening with a lot of the people outside with the ruckus. So if you would please clarify my asking.
You follow the City's policy manual, which has been adopted. Basically, you've had the opening of the public hearing. You've had prior to that, questions of Council members, which you engaged in. After that, the public hearing is open. The public hearing is now continued to a date in the future. Once the public hearing is closed, then it would be appropriate to make Council member comments, because otherwise, you don't know what the public is going to say.
Once it is closed, we can make public comments.
Absolutely.
Okay, so that was closed?
No, it has not been closed. It was continued.
Got it, got it. That's where I needed the clarity. I appreciate that clarification.
I thought I made that pretty clear.
Mayor, you can go ahead and proceed.
Oh my goodness, thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh gee. Okay, at this time, I open the public hearing.
No, 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 no. Any questions of the council?
Questions of staff on Item B2.
Two.
Yeah, I'm on B2, and...
Just don't skip the questions, in case a Council member has some.
Okay, do we have any questions of staff at this time?
No, but Council members do have questions. I don't know if staff have questions. I don't know if you're gonna ask that next.
No, I'm, right now, I'm asking if you have any questions of staff.
Yes, I have questions for staffs. So, Item B2, Notice of Exemption. What staff is composed of the Engineering Division? How many are in the Engineering Division? And does the purchasing contract and the bidding process, along with municipal codes, allow for the 4%? I don't know if there was a cap. What's the cap according to our adopted current laws? Would you please be able to explain in layman terms how the bid constituency, the bid contingency of approximately 15% and the construction management approximately 10% functions in context with the project budget of nearly a quarter million and the project cost of about $200,000? And how those numbers relate to the project balance, which is almost $185,000? And are there any properties benefiting from the Phantom West Street Lighting Project? And what started this conversation of a light, a street lighting project? And when was it first placed on paper? Is it a part of the capital improvement projects? Those are my questions.
Madam Mayor, members of the Council, I'll do my best. There's quite a few questions there. I know, the first of the questions, I think, involved the Engineering Department, who it comprised, or who it is comprised of. Can't tell you the exact number of staff members that comprise the Engineering Department, but I'd estimate 25 to 30. And Brian, can you correct me? Who I think is important to recognize in this case, Brian Gangler is our City Engineer. He's the leadership of the Engineering Department, and he is responsible for the Capital Improvement Program, which, one of your questions was, was this included? And in fact, it was included. So that's part of where the conversation started. But the conversation started probably several years ago, probably two to three years ago, when we had previously undertaken a lighting project at the airport. And you may remember that at the airport, I believe it was George Boulevard, particularly where SoCal Edison had actually abandoned providing service to certain streetlights. And that's what we're talking about here, is streetlights. And the Victorville Utility chose to undertake energizing those utility poles with its service. It's been recognized... It's been recognized altogether that at the airport, there are needs for street lighting improvements to create more lighting in the nighttime hours. And in fact, that is what this item is in response to. As to the question, speaking to if there's any property owners benefiting, these are properties all within the city's public right-of-way, so effectively, it's enhancing the city's public right-of-way system. You'd ask questions about the contingencies built in. And effectively, contingencies built into awards of contract are very customary. And these items, particularly the 15% and the 10%, 10% being for construction management, those are fairly customary. And those are in place really to provide for an appropriation of funds to address any unforeseen's in the construction field. So for example, if there were conditions that were unknown and discovered during the construction process and additional work is necessary, typically, those contingency funds are available to help satisfy the need to keep work moving and contractors getting paid. Speaking of the 4%, I think the 4% that you're talking about is spoken to on page 16 of the agenda. And I think that 4% really is just measuring the difference between the low bid over the engineer's estimate, which is something customarily the city engineer attempts to do to kind of show where the bids actually came in relative to our original estimating. Brian, I think I got them, but I...
I believe you covered it.
Okay.
Thank you.
You know how many people are in the engineering department?
I don't really want to list all the employees right now, but we could certainly give you a list of the employees if you want.
I would appreciate that. And the last question here that I don't believe you covered, Mr. Messler, is was this a part of the CIP project when?
Yes, it is programmed in this year's CIP.
Thank you, I appreciate.
Question, Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
City council did authorize staff to go to bid on this item, is that correct? And did you follow the normal bid procedures?
The project was in the approved CIP budget. That was part of the overall budget approval. And yes, we did follow the bid procedures according to the municipal code.
Thank you.
Thank you. We knew you did. At this time, I open the public hearing. I do not have any speaker cards, therefore, I close the public hearing. Then we have a motion.
I move approval of the staff recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further questions or comments?
So I have made my request by email at, at public meetings, asking the city manager and staff to add me to the notification list to get the emails when the bidding envelopes are opened. I would like to remind the city manager that I'm still interested, and this is a formal, public request. So, Mr. City Manager, how will you be proceeding with this request?
I believe we'll handle it the same way we have, which I think we've been sharing it via email. I've been advised that we've sent notices to you via email. They've gone unresponded to, but we'll continue to do that. And if there's an alternative form of communication that you'd like for us to pursue with you on this matter, certainly, we're prepared to do so.
I appreciate that. A hard copy in my inbox would also be appreciated.
I will continue. Item B3, a public hearing to hear arguments for and against... Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Mr. Negretti and Mr. Kennedy being absent.
Now we move on to item B3, a public hearing to hear arguments for and against a proposed municipal code amendment modify the allowable sign height and sign area for freeway-oriented shopping center signs. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council conduct the public hearing, find the municipal code amendment exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to SEQA Section 15061B, introduce ordinance number 2382 for adoption and first reading by title only, and waive for the reading in full of proposed ordinance number 2382.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff by council members?
So, item B3, the municipal code. My questions are, how long has the city of Victorville been doing business with this particular developer? Next question is, what is the process of approving an amendment change from the planning commission? And now to the city council? What measures, approaches, and methodologies were taken to determine that this project is exempt from SEQA upon SEQA guideline sections 15061B and 3? Developers contents that some major, contends that some major retailers are reluctant to locate in this center without sufficient freeway signage? What were those retailers, if you knew about them? That's on page 32. And what research has shown this form of sign height calculation on 31? The citation was not there, and I don't know what you meant with research. Is this other developers, other cities? And please, I would like for staff to remind the audience and council of the applicant that obtained approval of the sign in compliance with these standards in 2010. That's found on page 32. Please interpret how the city manager and any other bodies determine that the city council find on their own independent judgment is interpreted by staff, and how that interpretation is sustained by law, codes, regulations, if it applies. Where and who and to what number will the individuals complain to? Should complaints be received regarding the lights on page 33? And please tell the public how placement of the off-site signs may affect the health, safety, and welfare to the public, and what levels govern these claims? What's the reasoning behind only allowing advertisers only or business marketing within the desert plaza on page 42?
Good evening, Mayor, fellow council members. Just to kind of go through some of those questions that were, that were listed, let me see if I can capture them all, but please let me know if I...
Well, I also have a rendering here, so you don't have to break your head and try to figure it out. This would help. He has one? Oh, I appreciate you doing that.
So, the, the proposed code amendment was originally brought forward to us by a developer of the desert plazas. The desert plazas is the center that's located north of City Hall here, anchored by Home Depot and also Winko Foods. It's approximately 90 acres at build-out. It's currently only about halfway built. The developer's been working with the city since the early 2000s, I believe, building out that site. As far as the process of the code amendment, all code amendments first, for land use code amendments, would go through planning commission first with a recommendation. The planning commission made a unanimous recommendation to approve this amendment at their September planning commission meeting. Now it's before the city council for consideration. The planning commission also at that meeting reviewed a sign that would potentially be located at the desert plazas' center. At a rewind back, you brought up 2010. The same developer brought a proposal in 2010 to erect a sign at the same location. This is located at the, kind of at the northwest corner of Roy Rogers and Interstate 15. There's a small remnant parcel there from the freeway interchange when it was developed. It's zoned commercial, and it's located within 1,000 feet of the shopping center. The developer currently owns that property and wishes to erect a sign there to provide exposure for their existing tenants and future tenants of the shopping center. In 2010, it did comply with the city's standards. The developer, after doing some more research, they're, they're seeking a slightly larger sign. That's why a code amendment would have to occur. The code amendment is not specific for this site. It would apply to all properties that qualify within the city. So, again, just to make that distinction, it's this, this request is a code amendment that could affect other commercial developments throughout the city. Let's see what the other questions were. As far as a SEQA review, staff reviews SEQA compliance. And in this case, there's exemptions that SEQA allows for. As far as a sign, it's on a smaller site that's been disturbed before. And then as far as the lighting goes, you mentioned some of the impacts that it would have on the neighboring residents. There has been a lighting study that was provided on page 60 and 61. The impacts of the sign would be similar to a, a, a streetlight that a residence would have on their street. This proposal was noticed to the immediate area, so the property owners within 300 feet were notified. No one came to complain during that hearing. We actually had someone from the neighborhood in support of, of the sign. Let's see here. I think I touched on the 2010 approval, so it's the same developer that's coming back. Again, this is a legislative action of the planning and city council, so it's, it's to your full discretion on whether this is approved or not. As I mentioned, there's been a lighting study that was done. And then as, as far as the advertisement, throughout the city, there's considered onsite signs and off-site signs. This is still considered an onsite sign since it's located within 1,000 feet of the shopping center. There is a limitation for the shopping center to only provide signage for the tenants that would be located within those, within the shopping center, in this case, desert plazas. Off-site signs would be considered like a billboard. And our, and our code has specific standards related to off-site signs as well. But what this code amendment's addressing is only for onsite signs for shopping centers. And I believe that was it. Was there any other things that I didn't touch on?
Yeah, the research, there's, on two different occasions, we cited research. But what is the research that was being used, and what were the retailers that were invited but rejected because of the, the off-sign that wouldn't bring marketing?
So as far as the research, typically, when staff gets a request like that, we look at other cities to see how they're regulating signage. In this case, there was a few other cities that we identified. I know there's more that, that regulate the sign height based on the height of the roadway. And the code amendment before you is, is not generally an increase in height. Currently, those freeway signs for the large shopping centers are at 65 feet. The code amendment would allow for the sign height to be measured from the height of the adjacent roadway. If we're talking about desert plazas here, they're located next to the interchange where they have the obstruction of the overpass of Roy Rogers. So there's a 21-foot grade difference between Roy Rogers to the adjacent pad. This code amendment would allow the developer to request a sign that's 65 feet measured from the height of Roy Rogers. The total feet, total height would be 81 feet. And then as, as far as the future retailers or potential tenants that want more exposure, the developer actually is here today, and I'm assuming he could come up and explain kind of some of the tenants that they're working with that need the additional exposure. I think he would be better suited to answer that question.
Is that Jones Signs?
Jones Signs is, is the developer, but we have reps from, from the actual developer, the owner of the property.
I would appreciate if anyone can answer the question of what were these retailers in terms of not them coming in for whatever reason.
I'm Greg Clayton. As far as specifics on retailers, can you maybe just...
So I was looking at, see, I'm really trying to understand what potential commercial sites we would have in that area. I mean, I have a vested interest in who may come here as the constituency as well, but I don't know who your connections are and who you have negotiations with. Would it be like, I don't know, someone like, I just make a name up, you know?
Well, historically, like, we had things such as Target that were interested in that site, of course. I think that, that location has moved elsewhere. Given the fact there was, you know, conditions at the time that probably persuaded that deal. I don't have specifics on any particular retailers, but I know that in, in general marketing studies, everybody is very concerned over, over the lack of freeway exposure and signage for this site.
Thank you. Target was something that I didn't, I didn't think about. So now it helps me build a greater picture, and that's enough. Thank you for, for coming up. I have no further questions.
I have some questions, Madam Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
In looking at the photographs that are submitted, I went through those, and I'm aware that at the northwest corner, well, at the end of Civic Drive where the automobile dealers are, we have several vacant parcels. And I couldn't figure out which parcels are included or excluded from what you designate the desert plazas. I know of a particular business that's going in there, and they want their own sign. It would be closer to the main street than the, than the, than the big warehouse that's there. Also, the vacant property from the end of Civic and Roy Rogers all the way to Amargosa, is that a part of this? I don't find any boundaries across the street on the northerly side and the northwest corner of Civic Drive and Roy Rogers Drive. There's a huge empty piece of property that's for sale, which means that if that isn't a part of the same development, as soon as they go in, they want another sign that's 83 feet. And did this property owner agree to acquire those? Are they all included in the desert plazas? Or is each one of these develop? And if the argument is true that they have to have freeway access, then we have at least three additional signs of 83 feet that's going to be requested. So, and I'm looking, I tried to find, what is the boundary? What properties are included? Which ones are excluded, and it's not shown here? Or at least, then I don't know how to read the maps.
Yeah, my apologies for not including that. The, the original approval for signage dates back to the mid 2000s when sign programs were approved for the shopping centers. But to give you an idea of, of the overall desert plazas, it's approximately 90 acres and expands from Amargosa Road on the west all the way to Interstate 15 on the east. And then from the back of Home Depot, on the south side of Home Depot, all the way up to Midtown Drive. So where there's apartments to the north, all of that area encompasses the desert plazas.
But, but there's no map showing that, and there's no agreement that says that this one giant sign is going to be sufficient for all the property. And I see no agreement that if they decide that it's not successful, they can't sell a huge piece of property. And are we going to have a condition on the buyer of this piece of property? They can't have a sign too, that this one sign, like the mall, is sufficient for all the property? I see none of that in here.
So, as part of their conditional use permit approval, that spans over all of the desert plazas. I apologize, there wasn't a map, but this, this dates back, and these sign programs have been in place for over a decade now. But it defines the, the desert plazas as that area that I described. On top of that, though, our code only allows these freeway signs for shopping centers over 50 acres in size. So if you split this one in half, there's probably a likelihood that you're not gonna have two because it's only 90 acres. They need over 100 acres to get more than one of these signs along the freeway.
What is the height of the two signs for the automobile dealers?
Those are 60, I believe 65 feet. Backs at the top of the arch.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks.
At this time, I open the public hearing. I do not have any speaker cards. Therefore, I close the public hearing. Madam Clerk, read the title of ordinance number twenty-three eighty-two.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Victorville amending Title sixteen of the Victorville Municipal Code to modify the allowable sign height and sign area for freeway shopping center signs with an environmental exemption.
Thank you. At this time, we do need a motion and a second.
I move the item.
Motion by Ms. Gomez, seconded by Mr. Cox. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Hold on, let me make sure that I don't, I didn't have a comment in regards to that item. It's item B three, right? Yes. Okay, this is just a comment. I don't believe that our standards need to match other neighboring cities, but instead the city needs to focus on accommodating the needs of the community at hand, and the site plan should be reflective of that. I would like to also be added to the notification list for the zoning administrator reviews. I don't think I ever requested that before. And I'm formally requesting to the city manager a hard copy of the letters mailed out, one example would be enough, of the affected individuals that received such letter, along with any documentation that speaks to the purchase of the lot abutted next to the north side. That's on page thirty-five. This is my formal request. There's one other thing. That's it. Thank you.
Motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Ms. Gomez.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, I got that backwards. Motion by Ms. Gomez, seconded by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Mr. Kennedy and Mr. Negretti being absent.
Was the motion included? Waiver further reading, I hope?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, to continue. Consent calendar. Consent counter items C one through C four can be approved with one motion unless there is an item that needs to be pulled for discussion.
Yeah, I have comments and questions on all four. So my first one for C one, the question is, what is the city's auditing procedures and who all is involved, and how is this city reconciling the warrants to the availability for funds for payment?
Madam Mayor, City Council, so to answer that first question, there is a process we go through, one with our accounting staff, as well as through our payroll personnel to assure that what is being paid out is compliant with all the rules and regulations that we have associated with paying, paying our folks. And then there's a final check by our finance manager on the accounting side that they're balancing the cash accounts so that when those transfers are made, that the appropriate cash is available.
Thank you. For item C two, and this is also for C one, is I'm requesting a total of the yearly summary of the incrementalism of the payroll demands for the last three budget years, twenty fifteen, sixteen, twenty sixteen, seventeen, twenty seventeen, eighteen, to become more aware of the percentages. So what I'm looking here for is I want to see in the last three years, what is going on? Are we paying out more? Or has it lessened, or has it stayed the same? So it's nothing complicated. I'm just looking at a total, total for these three years, so I can look at a percentage if our payroll has increased, how much if it has. And that's the same for item C two, which are the commercial demand schedules.
So, easy enough on C one, but your question regarding C two, so you're asking for the total warrants? Have they?
So I'm looking right here.
Because these are all of the bills for the entire city, so you just want the aggregate amount of bills that we've paid for the three years?
So if you look at, for item C two, pay warrants, I didn't write it down on my notes, but there's, I think, was it half a million for two weeks or something like that? Or was it closer to? Okay, so I'm just looking at something very generic to look at a pattern.
Then you want to aggregate the total year?
Yeah, it's nothing very, in my opinion, complicated of what I'm seeking. And so, City Manager, how will you be proceeding with this request?
I will review and consider the appropriate rate to report back to satisfy your request.
I appreciate that. On nine twelve twenty eighteen, so I'm looking now through certain items, there's the bathroom rentals we acquired with the general funds and community services. What caught my eye with this was a double cost. So you look at one bathroom, it's ninety-nine, the other one is two hundred nearly. So I was wondering, when you guys are considering the monies coming out, I don't know if there was, like, buy one, get one or something, whatever, but it just seemed awkward to have something less expensive, and then all of a sudden rises in cost for the same bathrooms, and that's concerning. The other question is, what is the purpose of the Frontier Communication Corporations? What services are gained with this company? The next one is Ray, thank you for using your City of Victorville business cards to expose and attract SCLA. If you ever have any type of restrictions, you can reach out. And what is the purpose and goal of the Counseling Team International? I saw something with employees, I'm interested in what's going on there with our expenses. I also saw for VVT-A August twenty eighteen bus passes, is this a program? What was the purpose of the purchasing of these bus passes? Also for Green D. Bornowski, there is a retainer fee. What does that cover? Is that covering Gloria Garcia's representation for the civil harassment? I also saw Daily Journal Corporation, and it was interesting, I'd just like to know, what is that? Is that just a newspaper, or what it is? I wasn't sure. It is, okay. And I noticed that we expend money on city vehicles, but how much are we expending in training our drivers on pedestrian bicyclist, bicyclist safety when on the road? So I'd like to have, and I'm requesting data to support your answer to place in my inbox. So this is a request that I'm making to the city manager. I've heard several concerns of our drivers.
Your time is up for C two.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
Your time is up for C two.
And so, I'm going to finish my question, like, I'm going to repeat it again. So what I asked in my last question was, city drivers, are they being trained? Because I have several concerns from residents.
Your time is up.
So that was my question that I wanted to repeat, and thank you for allowing me to do that. Item C three, what is the purpose of the RIT? And briefly, what is the summary judgment? That's a question for the city attorney. Because I've been denied in person and by email the interactions with all staff in the City of Victorville, with the exception of the city manager and the city attorney, I am publicly requesting to the city manager and on the record that I need information about the Green Tree Boulevard Extension Project. I'm available October sixteenth at noon, October seventeenth at noon, or October eighteenth at ten o'clock. Please reach out to me by phone to let me know when you can accommodate my schedule to inquire about this project. Municipal Code allows council members to inquire to department and staff, which has been frustrating to no avail, to not be able to get any of this information. And for the attorney, I'd like to see the legal opinion of what supersedes discretion, case law, municipal case, municipal codes, because it comes to the point where everything is just being jumbled, and I want to be able to have a backing of what supersedes what municipal code or city manager discretion. Those are my questions for that items. Item C four, I have a comment and a request. This is about conflict of interest codes for the City of Victorville and so forth. Please provide me with hard copies of the requirements, the review procedures, and the city clerk's engagement, along with other pertinent information that was used to conduct this review, along with conflict of interest codes, no later than October twelfth. And this is, the city manager, this is a request that I'm making to you publicly. We had no back information onto what this was. I know it's going to come again on October sixteenth, but I like the opportunity to see what you saw as a city clerk and who engaged in that FPPC and all this.
Move approval of consent, one through four, with the understanding that the city manager will respond to the numerous questions from Councilmember Gomez.
Well, I have to amend that to also say that since nobody is responding, I would like a response, a written response to all those questions, and I will forego asking you to answer them at this moment.
I do have one card here for item C three. Ramiro Rodriguez.
Hello. My question's about the approval of the minutes for the meeting of September eighteenth. There was a lot of subjects taken account for, a lot of people spoke on certain subjects, one of them being the purchasing power of the city manager from twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand. I came up here and asked why, and then in the information of the website, it says that I had said that I was against it. I never was against it, I was just asking the reason. And then after Ms. Gomez pressed, Mr. Kennedy answered that basically they were raising it because the other cities, that was their regular purchasing power. That was my question now. If they don't approve the minutes, do they proceed with this? If to us as taxpayers and citizens of Victorville, do we have any say in anything that goes through? For example, the warding of the contract, various people spoke of the contract for the carpet for the police department for almost eighty thousand dollars. And then they also, some people spoke for and against the use of city resources to defend Gloria Garcia on a restraining order filed by a private citizen. Now, since we came up here and spoke for and against, do we have any say of you guys approving it? The county, the council, sorry about saying you guys, the council members proceeding with approving these minutes? Are you taking consideration what we come up here and say, or are we just venting? That is my question. Thank you.
Did you already take a motion on this?
Why, if Mr. Rodriguez didn't take a position for it against, and our website says that it's for against, it just should be?
No, just action items, action minutes. They don't go into detail.
So it doesn't say that?
No. I don't believe so.
Oh, heck. What was the issue then?
The issue was that there was an opposition, and I brought that to the table, but it wasn't pushed forward. So I'm going to add to the minutes for the October second, that the minutes reflect the clarification for a second time, that the public commenter, Mr. Romero, would like for it to reflect that he was not in opposition, that he was merely clarifying and asking a question. This is the second time that I've been doing this.
Okay, so I will understand this. Where in the minutes?
If my recollection serves me correctly, you won't see that in these particular minutes. These were within the last two meeting sites that we had that discussion. And so he is coming a second time today in front of us to show that his desire was precisely that, and if we could make a change for it to reflect.
Had it been approved?
Right, the minutes have already been approved, and at that moment's time, it's also on the record that you were not in opposition, that you were merely, merely just reflecting on what was being said. So I made sure I said that as well. So thank you for coming in.
Well, the minute, if I may, the following people spoke, the following people spoke. These are action items, we don't keep it. I'm trying to figure out, where did we say that he spoke against it?
A few meetings ago, she brought up that there was a narrative. So now we're just putting names, just to clarify. A couple meetings ago, she said that there was a narrative to his speaking. So now we've just cut it down to speaker, period.
Yeah, it's an action minute.
Yeah.
Okay, then there's no correction to be made.
Nothing to correct.
That move approval.
So I made a motion to amend the first motion, and it was that I would forego on the condition that city staff respond in writing to these particular items on the consent calendar, C one through C four, and that was my motion.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Motion by Ms. Gomez, seconded by Mr. Cox. Is there any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Mr. Kennedy and Mr. Negretti being absent.
Now we move on to written communications. First item, D one, award of contract and budget amendment for Doris Davis Skate Park Project. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the city council adopt resolution number eighteen dash zero eight four, thereby amending the annual budget for fiscal year eighteen nineteen and approving additional appropriation of eight hundred fifty-seven thousand two hundred seventy-three dollars from Fund three fifty-four, recreation development impact fees, and thirty-five thousand eight hundred thirty-four dollars from Fund two thirty, local transportation funds for the Doris Davis Skate Park Project, including additional capital improvements at said park. Wave irregularities in the bid submitting by Grindline Skate Park Incorporated to correct a calculation error of the base bid amount by adding seventy dollars and correcting the percentage of the subcontracting utilized for the contract, and award a construction contract to Grindline Skate Park Incorporated in the amount of one million six hundred ninety-eight thousand seven hundred eighteen dollars and fourteen cents for the skate park at Doris Davis Park, which includes additional park amenities.
Thank you.
Mayor Garcia, if I might, this afternoon I learned that apparently there has been a bid protest in connection with this item, therefore I would recommend that you continue this item until we can understand the merits of the bid protest.
Do we have a date to continue to win, or just continue?
Hopefully, we can get that resolved prior to the next meeting.
And that'll be?
October sixteenth, is that correct?
Sixteen?
I believe it's October sixteenth is the next meeting, yes.
Do I, I do have one card, do I call out the?
It's not a public hearing, but certainly you could entertain that one card, and then I would recommend again, a motion to continue this item.
Okay. I do have one card, Christine Pepper Blakely.
And as a point of order, I'm going to go ahead and speak my turn after Mrs. Blakely.
Well, go ahead and speak, since I'm going to have council members ask questions of staff. Can you hold off for just one second, please? I will have you speak.
So first, I wanted the clarification of this bid process for October sixteenth. I'm not sure why it's being forwarded to the next meeting, but my question is, aware of the contract and the budget amendment for Davis Doris Park Project as set forth in Resolution eighteen dash zero eight four. So the skate park is scheduled to break ground next week, and it's already costing the city taxpayers more money than was already appropriated. Is that correct? Is this the bullet train? How does the recreation, recreation development impact fees get replenished? In other words, what is the percentage and the process where we accumulate these development impact fees? Another thing is, first, I'm told that the project ends up staying with the original service provider and are not bidded out immediately because the bidded processes or the bidded project doesn't need to be switching hands. Now I find irregularities in having them being waived. How does that render an equal process, and how is that done different from any other former projects? So I'm not understanding what's going on with this particular process. We're going to add another million or so, approximately a million dollars. I get it, you know, Mr. Negretti has a project he's promised in his campaign trail. I understand that we're in a hurry, there's an election process that's coming up November, but I don't think it's fair that it needs to cost the taxpayers approximately another... But I don't think it's fair that it needs to cost the taxpayers approximately another million dollars because how is politicizing something like this, a decision that really helps our taxpayers? It really shows our partisanship in this regard. We should go with option one now that we all have the information. And I'm concerned with the discrepancies, the irregularities, the errors, the calculations that this project has had since its inception. This project was to cost the taxpayers about 1.4 million. And now we're going to reappropriate another million dollars.
Your two minutes are up.
Did you say something?
Yes, your two minutes are up. So I have this lady waiting. She needs, did you have any questions, Jim?
I do, but I'll wait.
You don't?
I do, but I'll wait.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Christine Pepper Blakely and I'm a resident of Victorville. And I implore you to please reconsider this skate park. One, putting it at Doris Davis Park/ Pebble Beach is the most ridiculous idea you could come up with. It is a high crime area and it is the worst place to put it in this city. All you are doing is relocating your homeless and asking for trouble. If you knew your city, you would know that is not the place to put that skate park. Once again, we do not have a large enough skater population in this desert for that skate park. It is a waste of money. There is a skate park in Adelano that does not get used. There is a skate park in Apple Valley that barely gets used. We had the first original skate park in Victorville over by the swap meet and they got shut down for a reason. If it didn't work the first time, why on earth would you try it again? That is the problem with this city council. Common sense. If it doesn't work the first time, why would you try it again? Do not, do not, do not put that skate park by Doris Davis Park. All you're doing is asking to give the gangbangers more concrete to ride on, the homeless people someplace to hang out. You're putting $2 million over there for nothing. You are wasting taxpayers' money and you're just, common sense. Common sense. If you knew your city, you would know not to put a skate park. If you want to put it somewhere, stick it in that golf course that we don't own.
I have another card. Daniel Ramos.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, good evening, staff as well. Just quickly, what I wanted to point out about the skate park here is, what alarms my team and I is the amount of money that's being spent on the skate park. According to some research that we did, you know, at the end of the day, anything that's being brought into Victorville, that's being built for the public, that the public can use collectively, I think is a good idea, right? But before we jump headfirst into this project and spend upwards of 1.7 million dollars, I think there's some questions that we have that we'd like to bring forward to you guys. There's two costs associated with building a skate park. First cost is design, the design and the building of the skate park. And the second cost would be the maintaining and operating of the facility over time. So nationwide, the average cost to build a skate park right now is $45 a square foot. So what we'd like to kind of know is, what's the square footage costing us? What's the square footage of the skate park itself? And has there been any agreement or any talks about what the cost is going to be to maintain that skate park on a yearly basis? Thank you.
That was the only cards that I had. So I'll go back to councilmembers asking questions of staff.
Well, I'm waiting for my responses.
Jim, did you have something?
Yeah, I had two minutes to ask and I'm waiting for my responses.
My recommendation would be to continue this item, given that I haven't seen yet the bid protest. And I think I'd advise the council not to be making comments until we see what the merits are of the bid protest. Again, my recommendation would continue this to the next meeting.
Thank you. So this item will be continued?
I have a couple of questions, if I might.
Okay, go ahead, Jim.
Is this total cost include the addition of a restroom and was it included in the initial estimate? And secondly, I now see that on the map at least, there is a second restroom. And is that included in the estimate or is that an additional cost?
Mayor, Pro Tim Cox.
If you don't have the answers, that's okay because we're going to continue this though. But they need to be answered, that's all.
We can answer it when we bring the item back.
Okay.
Well, I'm going to do an alternate motion and I would like my questions answered through email. I'm interested in the questions I posed. We're not going to answer them right now in public, but I would like a response through email. And that's going to be my motion in order for us to continue to go forward with this motion and continue it to October 16th.
So can I rephrase it? Your motion is to continue this and have written responses through email to you regarding your questions.
I have no objections to that. I'll second that.
So this item will be continued to October 16th.
Do I make the motion?
We need a-
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to get ahead of you.
We have a motion and a second.
Motion by Ms. Gomez, seconded by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Mr. Kennedy abstaining and Mr. Negretti being absent.
Now we move on to item D2. Request for approval of contract change order numbers 1 and 2 for the runway 17-35 rehabilitation project phases 1A and 1B. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the Board of Directors of the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority approve change orders number 1 and 2 to the runway 1735 rehabilitation project phases 1A and 1B, project number CC17-111, thereby increasing the amount of the construction agreement by in between the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority and Kaufman Specialties Incorporated by $267,890.61 for new total contract amount not to exceed $12,232,890.61.
Thank you. Are there any questions of councilmembers of staff?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Jim.
Where does this new water meter go to and for what purpose?
It is part of the main water system of the airport. It's part of the west side loop system that will in one day endeavor to loop back all the way around to the Dr. Pepper facility. So currently, there's a water line going to the Dr. Pepper facility and it extends just beyond that. There's another main water line serving the SCLA, of which this is essentially the tail end of. The long-term goal is for a complete loop system to be able to continue to service not just the existing area, but also as the airport develops further north.
That for development, fire protection, or both?
Both. One of the side benefits of this is that that end of the airport had very little, by the way, water, particularly in the event of a crash from an aircraft. Now we have been able to provide water all the way up to the runway's edge at that center point of the airfield.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I do not have any speaker cards. Therefore, I need a motion in a second.
Move approval of item D2.
Second. Motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Ms. Gomez. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Mr. Negretti being absent.
Item D3, request to amend fiscal year 2018-2019 budget to fund necessary repairs to aircraft rescue and firefighting ARF apparatus. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the Board of Directors of the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority adopt resolution number SCLA 18-007, amending the fiscal year 2018-2019 budget for additional revenue in the amount of $98,761 and additional appropriation in the amount of $150,000.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any questions of staff?
I have questions, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, Jim.
I'm assuming at the time of the budget and the preparation of the expenditures, that none of this was contemplated?
That's correct.
And... When did you find out about this?
We found out about this at the time when the new fire provider, the new ARF provider, Mission Aviation, took control of the station and was able to start testing the facility, start to exercise the equipment and start to go through a complete and thorough inspection.
Well, it's a surprise, but it isn't a major cost item. It's $150,000. Make the corrections that are necessary to ensure that we have the appropriate equipment to provide fire protection and we are in concurrence with the requirements of the Federal Aviation Commission?
Yes, sir.
No further questions?
So I have a question for clarification. I was under the assumption that the fleet that we sold or auctioned off, which is we got 90, almost 100 grand, that was going to be a part of the 150,000. Okay, all right, thank you.
Correct.
I do not have any speaker cards. Therefore, we need a motion in a second.
Move approval of D3.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further questions or comments?
Yes. So yes, after the San Bernardino County Fire, returns the aging fleet of ARFF vehicles, we, the city, ignore any assumed responsibility that it was a cost that we never provided the monies for. On several occasions, the San Bernardino County Fire asked for the city to cooperate, but ignored the requests. Now we stick up and ask for money for maintenance and service. Shame on the city for using the San Bernardino County Fire as an escape goat to save money. And now we're considering to reappropriate monies. It was about time we started paying attention to the old fleet.
No comment. To the staff?
If that's a question, Madam Mayor, City Council, I can answer a part of that. Over for the last 10 years, as most people in the audience knows, San Bernardino County has provided service, both for the city service as well as for the ARF services up at the airport. As part of that arrangement, we leased the equipment to them to use for, to provide the service, as well as we have a contractual obligation between the two parties that requires that they maintain that equipment as well. And if there were any repairs, and I believe it's a $5,000 mark, if there are any repairs that come in for our apparatus that exceeds 5,000, we have an obligation to pay for those repairs. However, as part of their contract, specifically with this particular station, we paid, the last contract, $178,000 as part of the contract for facility maintenance and vehicle maintenance. And so to make a statement that we did not contribute to the maintenance of that facility, it's built into our contract that we pay them for the maintenance of that facility. As well as when we did take over, and I'm assuming that when we take over for the city service in March, we're going to ask county fire to, you know, we're going to evaluate the equipment that we bring over for the city service and do the same, go through the same process. When we took over Station 319, I placed a request to the county fire chief for any requests that he had made specifically to the city for repair work that exceeded the 5,000. And I think I made that request around the July 5th timeframe and I'm still waiting on a reply. I don't think I've received anything yet where he can document where he actually made formal requests to the city to repair those pieces of apparatus that we have discovered had some problems. And so, and I also had not, I don't, I'm not sure, and the chief, you can help me out on this. Have we received the actual maintenance records of those vehicles while under the care of the county fire department?
We have not.
Right, so, you know, I think we, in our contract, we pay them to maintain the vehicles. Trust me, there's nothing in that contract that comes free. We pay to maintain those vehicles. We pay to maintain the facilities. We have not received upon multiple requests, I believe the chief meets with the county fire folks every week, every Tuesday, as part of the transition. And I can recall the few meetings that I was a party to, we asked for the maintenance records of the vehicles and they have yet to deliver any maintenance records for the vehicles. Nor have they actually produced the actual request to the city to fund any of these types of repairs prior to the transition.
George, is there any indication that any of that 178 that was included in the contract was spent on maintenance?
There's no way of us knowing. I mean, it's part of the monthly payment. It's built into their contract that we pay that $178,000 to them. But there's no obligation for them to come back and detail how that money was spent. Now, we can always request that. And I think we've tried to kind of ascertain how the money was spent by requesting the maintenance records of the vehicles. And we have not received that information yet. And we requested, it's part of our agenda for the meeting every Tuesday that we've been having. And we have yet to receive any documentation related to the maintenance records.
If I can just clarify one comment. We have received maintenance records in regards to the suppression equipment, the regular suppression equipment, but we did not receive any maintenance records for the ARF equipment specifically.
Wouldn't that be important when we transfer equipment, that we would get a complete maintenance history on those vehicles?
Yes, it would. And considering that the city had been, is part of the contract, providing funding on a monthly basis to maintain those units out there and the equipment out there, to be able to provide a listing of what had been done and the fact that they were fully operational and functional at the time of transition would have been an important factor.
I would like to have these questions answered because we have a council member saying shame on the city or shame on the staff. It sounds like to me that George's comments and the chief's comments are absolutely contradictory to Ms. Gomez's comments. I know she didn't make them up. Somebody gave them to her. But it sounds like it's shame on the county for the maintenance. But I don't want to condemn anybody or make any charges until I see an actual, in writing, explanation of what occurred. I would request staff to do that and submit it to all members of the council.
I would say, maybe it's a little premature, but shame on San Bernardino County Fire and shame on Ms. Gomez for not understanding that we paid for something that we did not receive.
Well, shame on you, Ms. Gloria Garcia, because I'm in contact with the county fire just as weekly as just the city is. And I'm not sure if you're just in contact with the county as you are with the chief of your own city. So I respect your comments, but I also know that I'm answering within my purview of understanding with my direct connections and you are not.
We don't have to be charged in meeting with the county under a contract or any other contractor. So I don't know what that actually means, but let's get it straightened out so that everybody will understand exactly what we're facing and why. Public needs to know.
Exactly. And we will find out. Okay, so where are we now?
I do have a motion by Mr. Kennedy and seconded by Mayor Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Hold on, hold on. Give me a moment. I need to know what item we're on, what we're talking about.
We've already gone through the comments, period.
I'm not trying to give you comments. I want to make sure that what I'm going to answer is what I intend to answer.
Okay.
And it becomes very distracting when I'm interrupted or I'm accused of something. So I need to recompose myself and find out what item I am on. So this is what I'm going to do right now.
D3.
I'm ready.
I don't know.
Did we vote?
We're waiting on a vote. We have a motion in a second on item D3. We've gone through comments.
Call for the vote?
No.
Can we vote?
Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Mr. Negretti being absent.
What is the, what are we, what is the motion? Because nobody repeated that motion. We're just assuming that everybody knows what you're voting on.
Resolution to adopt SCLA 18-007, amending the fiscal year 2018-19 budget for additional revenue in the amount of $98,761 and an additional appropriation in the amount of $150,000. And that was the recommendation of the staff that the clerk wrote at the beginning. On agenda, item number three. Move on.
Can I continue? D-4, approval of annual purchase order request for annual supply of 1-inch copper tubing for fiscal year 2018-2019. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the Victorville Water District Board of Directors approve the annual purchase order request for consumer pipe and supply for the annual supply of 1-inch copper tubing in the not-to-exceed amount of $119,925.75.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions of staff on this item? If not, I do not have any speaker cards. Then we have a motion in a second.
Move approval of item D-4?
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mr. Cox. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Mr. Negretti being absent.
Item D-5, award of agreements for on-call emergency water sewer and storm drain repairs. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the City Council and the Victorville Water District Board of Directors approve the on-call emergency service provider agreements with Christianson Brothers General Engineering, Incorporated, and Kelly's Underground Construction, Incorporated, in the not-to-exceed amount of $160,000 per contractor, and DDH Apple Valley Construction, Incorporated, in the not-to-exceed amount of $60,000.
Thank you. Any questions of staff or council members?
I have a question, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, Jim.
The staff write-up answers this fairly clearly. On the other hand, I know that our water department responds to emergencies constantly. And so what's the distinction between using our personnel or calling a contractor?
So, there's times when we don't have the specific equipment needed to make the repairs or necessarily some of the expertise. One of the, for instance, cases was at the airport when we had a waterline break under a very thick piece of concrete out there, and it took a lot of resources and equipment to take care of it. So, another one would be if we're inundated in repairs, if we need to reach out to an emergency contractor, we'll do it in that case as well.
And then the second question is that if you need, if you have an emergency service required, who makes that determination to call out the staff or to call out the contractor?
We would make that decision and take it to the city manager at that point, so with the recommendation.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No. I don't have any speaker cards. Thank you. I don't have any speaker cards. Therefore, I need a motion.
I move the staff recommendation, which is to award of service provider agreement with Christianson Brothers General Engineering, Inc., Kelly's Underground Construction, Inc., and DDH Apple Valley Construction, Inc., for the on-call slash emergency water sewer, stormwater drain repair.
Second. Motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Mr. Kennedy. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Mr. Negretti being absent.
Item D-6, approval of agreement for distribution systems, water quality sampling for fiscal year 2018-2019. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the Victorville Water District Board of Directors approve the general service provider agreement for Babcock Laboratories, Inc., for an amount not to exceed $78,400 for distribution system water quality sampling for fiscal year 2018-2019.
Thank you. Questions of staff by council members? None. I don't have any speaker cards. Therefore, we need a motion.
Move approval of item D-6?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mayor Garcia. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Mr. Negretti being absent.
Item D-7, amendment to storage agreement between Mojave Basin Area Water Master and Victorville Water District. Madam Clerk, read the recommendation.
That the Victorville Water District Board of Directors approve the proposed amendment number one to the storage agreement between Mojave Basin Area Water Master and Victorville Water District.
Thank you. Questions of staff by council members?
Yes, what's the location of the service provider and how much money did the city spend on the series, on this series for the former service provider?
I don't have those numbers, what we did spend for this, but I just can tell you, like stated in the staff report, that any money we spend on this is billed and reimbursed by High Desert Power Project, and their location is north of the SCLA.
So, because I was looking at this as a loss. Our water was tested, and then it was tested again. So I'm thinking, let's see, amendment, storage agreement between, yeah. So when I was reading the report, every time the water was, this whatever water was, was being tested, was contaminated by the lab, right? Babcock Laboratories?
That's the previous agenda item.
So amendment to storage agreement between Mojave Basin Area Water Master and the Victorville Water District. So this has to do with wastewater or potable water?
This has to do with potable water? It has to do with storing water in our basin?
Doug, this is the agreement we've had with HDPP for almost 20 years, maybe longer, I would think.
Yeah, back about 2000, and that was originally for injection. But this one, in particular, the CEC approved some drought relief. So this is for the ability to percolate water into the ground using MWA facilities. And MWA only contracts with us, so they need an agreement between us and MWA.
Buy it from Water Master and...
But we bill it.
And HDPP repays us.
Yeah, they pay for everything.
Yeah, so going back, this item D-7 is about Babcock Laboratories. It wasn't...
No, I think we're on D-8.
You wrote it down wrong.
Or D-7. This is about, not Babcock.
We're on D-7.
D-6, Ms. Babcock. Okay. Any other questions? If not, I do not have any speaker cards. I need a motion.
I move approval of item D-7.
Motion by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Mr. Cox. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with Mr. Negretti being absent.
Item D-8, comments made by Councilmember Gomez at the September 4th, 2018 council meeting. The recommendation is information only. Any action is at the discretion of the City Council. I do have some speaker cards. Or do we have any questions of staff at this time by council members?
I have comments, Madam Mayor, but I'd rather wait until you individuals have the right to speak or finish their speaking.
Okay. Call out the cards. Robert Harrman. After Robert will be Maggie Martin.
Evening, Council. There were some rather outlandish accusations made at that meeting by Mrs. Gomez, and I would ask that she present proof or keep her mouth quiet. She's making some pretty strong accusations to the other council members and has absolutely no proof. So I would ask that you supply the proof for your accusations. Thank you.
We'll engage the debate.
You want to stare down for a couple minutes? I'm welcome.
Madam Mayor, if I might, we take testimony. We don't engage the debate. Please.
Maggie Martin, and after Maggie, Ramiro Rodriguez.
Good evening, your honor, counsel. Maggie Martin, City of Victorville. Unlike Ms. Gomez, I'm trying to stay in compliance with the public's obligation to be aware of what the rules of decorum are here in this forum. I am going to, I don't even have the words to begin to describe how to emphasize this. I can't emphasize this enough. First of all, let me ask you a question. Is this the city's or is this hers? This right here?
That's the city's.
Is that hers?
It's the city's.
I wasn't speaking to you.
Four people told you it's the city's.
I wasn't speaking to you. Am I looking at you?
I'm speaking to you.
Am I looking at you?
That's the city's.
Madam Mayor, the witnesses are required to address the chair. Please.
That's what I was doing.
Do that.
She has one right over there.
That's not the question.
That's hers or the city's? The city's. No. Okay. That also is in violation of the new policy and procedures. I spent quite a bit of time over this past weekend reading the first 30 pages. Yeah, Ms. Gomez's name is written all over that. I'm sorry that you guys had to be put through that. And the taxpayers, because they always like to bring up what the, what the city's costing the taxpayers. There's never much mention of what she's cost the taxpayers. Let's not talk about law enforcement intervention, courthouse interventions, DA, grand jury. Let's not talk about how that cost the city, but, or the taxpayers. But more to the point, I strongly urge you, adamantly beg, please vote in favor of forwarding this comment, D-4, D-8 item, to the district attorney for further investigation. What I saw here already tonight, she's unhinged, off her rails, gone off the rail. And I also want to mention something too, that, or ask this too. As an employee of the city, I don't know if there's any benefits allotted, but if you have an employee assistance program, I would strongly suggest, maybe consult with council, see if there's some way you can compel her to a mental evaluation, because it's obviously blatant. Earlier tonight, I heard Andre and others have to repeat to her four times something that I got the first time.
I have 30 seconds.
I don't get it. There's just something wrong with that picture there. Thank you.
Ramiro Rodriguez.
Wow, you can really feel the love in this room, these people. I'm just want to answer about taxpayers. Taxpayers being abused of their monies. I'm going to change it up a bit. I was going to talk to this later, but talking about wasting money, let's talk about, this is something I got off the Victor Valley Press and the newspaper. You have losses of $100 million on Foxborough under the leadership of Robertson and Inland Energy. Losses of $76 million under the leadership of Terry Caldwell, Robertson, and Inland Energy, and the big fat loss of $30 million on the sewer, on the sewer plant under the leadership of Keith Metzler and Councilman Cox. Also, let's not forget the missing $13 million in money on the hangers which led to the litigation through the SEC, which have cost the city almost $20 million so far. And by the way, the leases were prepared by the city attorney, who knew full well of the violations and the second lease. And this is all stuff I'm quoting from the newspaper, so I'm not making this up. And then who remembers Foxborough, which was budgeted for 22 million but ended up costing $83 million. That's $61 million over budget. And the main thing is, what about Victorville, the hybrid power plant? This is a grand price, which was originally budgeted at 700 million, but ended, ended being over budgeted by over $300 million. It went over a billion dollars. Plus, the golf course that, what, drains the city, what, half a million dollars a year?
Thirty years ago.
So anyways, we asked a while back about funding for translation services, and all we got was learn to speak American. All my clients come and they speak English, and I'd rather pay for the kids' Little League light bill than to fund translation services here in the city. And we asked, do a study, see if it is really warranted. Then we find out 35% of the people here in Victorville do not speak English. Plus, we have 55% Hispanic population. So I kind of think you guys work for us. Whether we want to spend, buy lollipops for the dogs, it's our money. It's not your money. And for somebody to say, I'd rather spend that money on the Little League's electric bill, that's disrespecting us, the citizens. And that's very disrespectful for the taxpayers, because, man, I pay my taxes every year and a lot of taxes. And for you guys to think that you guys actually get to sign for us, no. It's the other way around. And don't you ever forget that. Thank you very much.
Rabu Rodriguez.
Okay, I am so disgusted with Blanca Gomez. She's recording this meeting, and Mayor and City Attorney, I'm asking you to file a complaint with the district attorney. That is a clear violation of the Brown Act. I'm asking you again, I asked you last, at the last meeting, please do this. She needs to be corrected. She needs to be replaced. She needs to resign. Blanca, can you please look over here? That's part of the Brown Act. You're supposed to pay attention. Okay? Pay attention to what I'm saying. It's important that you, and by the way, the last speaker made a comment about English. That's the official language in California and throughout the United States. The people that don't speak English, they need to learn English. They need to assimilate. Assimilate means to, if you don't know, you have to comply with the rules and the laws of the United States of America. English is the language. So, if you want to speak Spanish, then maybe you might want to either go to school, or you might want to go back to Mexico or wherever you came from, because the language is English. So, I'm ashamed of you, Blanca, the way you conducted yourself at the last meeting and the meeting before that, and the meeting before that. It's terrible, the things you say and do. You might have to get your head out of the sand, because you don't know what's going on. It's terrible. You need to get your head together. If you want to stay there, remember, we are doing a recall for Blanca Gomez, and I'm appealing to the citizens of Victorville, please sign the petition. Pack her bags, send her home, because she doesn't belong up there with these. Ladies and gentlemen, because she's not a lady. She's terrible. She needs to be replaced. And it's up to you citizens to sign the petition, to vote her out. She needs to get out. Also, you should be ashamed of yourself because you don't know what's happening. I think you need to do a...
You have 30 seconds.
Medical, you need to go and get an evaluation of your mental status, because I don't think you're all there. So, thank you very much for allowing me to exercise my First Amendment right. Thank you.
I have another card. April Pinkston.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council.
Good evening, Mayor, City Counsel. I know this is probably going to sound a little different than some of the other people have said about Blanca. Now, I was, Blanca, I was very disappointed in your behavior at the last city council. But regardless, you know, several city council meetings ago, when I tried to get up here and Gloria kept cutting me off, saying, oh, I had one minute. I intended to tell you that although I don't like you politically, I don't know you personally, and I pray for you, young lady, and as I pray for each and every one of these people. Now, I do have PTSD, and I have made that clear, and I lost my composure, okay? And then I lost my train of thought. But I pray for you, young lady, because you have a lot of responsibility on your shoulders, as all these other people do. And you are, all of you are accountable to us, not the other way around. I don't have anything against you personally, because like I said, I don't know, and I talked to people that know you, and they've said that outside of your politics, that you're a very nice lady, and I'm sure you are. But you know, God has given you this position. God has given each and every one of you this position, and you have a lot on your shoulders. And like I said, I don't hate you, but I just really wish that you would understand who it is that you are representing. You represent all of Victorville, not just the illegal, excuse me, not just the illegals, not just the Spanish-speaking people, but each and every one of us. And I have participated in the petition to recall you, because I think your behavior has been outlandish and outrageous and unbecoming an officer of the city. But I haven't, I haven't been actively doing that lately, because I want to see if you can just turn yourself around and understand that you're not up here to blow gas. Every time a question comes up here, you ask nine-hundred questions, and to the answers, if I were on the city council, you betcha I would know the answers before I came to a city council meeting.
You have thirty seconds.
And I just really wish, Blanca, that you would understand who it is you're representing. Thank you.
Those are all the speaker cards that I have. So I do need a motion, even though I don't know which way this is going.
There's no motion, there's no action.
No motion.
It's information only at this point, unless you want to refer the matter to other authorities, which is at your discretion.
I'd like to make a comment, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, Jim.
It was very difficult to determine what the allegations really were, but they sounded horrible, when individuals say that they have alarming information about something but don't name it, but seems to indicate that the city manager didn't properly bid things, and that's why we ask, were they bid, did they follow the bidding procedure? They also talked about enriching the pockets of former and current council member. I'm not attempting to answer for any council member, I want to answer for me. If somebody accuses me of being enriched in any way of setting here, I want them to prove it, because I certainly have not. As far as the executive team and the other council members, it's up to them to answer those questions. What I am concerned about is that if there are complaints of violations of laws or anything, that this should be made to the property authorities. And I have said over and over, I'll give you a roadmap, or take you to the grand jury or the district attorney, and if you don't have that kind of proof, then it shouldn't, those comments shouldn't be made. It's not good for anyone. And what I'm more concerned about anything is that if we have individuals who want to make an investment in this city, your city, our city, and they watch these accusations, I'm not sure they're going to be willing to make the investment that we need made for businesses to come here and to create employment, especially, we know what happened in Bell. Nobody on this council has anything to do with Bell. We're a charter city, but we have a lot of charter cities. The city council, back in two thousand and seven, formed a charter city, the people voted on it, has nothing to do with Bell, none of the representatives, I don't know any of the representatives, and I don't know why this was brought up, but it's a, it's a kind of a smear against the city. And if you're a businessperson going to submit, going to invest a lot of money, do you really want to invest money if these things are hanging out there? So not only do I want, if there's actual accusations of violating the law, that should be submitted to a proper authority, because the public needs to know. A gentleman tonight indicated, and normally we don't debate, but named me as the newspaper saying that I was involved in losing twenty million in a sewer plant. I've never seen that article. I can assure you that if that article had been there, I would hold the Daily Press responsible. I don't think it said that, because that isn't what happened, and that plant does not lose money. And the decision to build the plant was made by the city council before I ever came back to the city. So when you make comments like that, there's no basis in truth. It not only worries the people that are here, who are going to be making decisions on the leadership of the city, but more importantly, and equally importantly, are people who need to invest in your city, in our city, to make this a better place, walk away shaking their heads, thinking, is there a bunch of crooked people running things? And I just point out that this council, if something as crooked as going on, and a member of the council knows it and doesn't report it, I believe the attorney will affirm that under law, they are just as guilty. Therefore, they should be going to the grand jury, to the DA, and not be making them to the general public unless they can back them up. So it happened. I have read this carefully, because I made the motion, and when you read it really, really carefully, and I hope people get a copy of this and read it, just so they'll understand, it was such a broad brush coverage, that it's almost meaningless, and there's really nothing to look into. I mean, it was just, I don't know what the purpose of it was, but as far as I'm concerned, it's up to the rest of the council, the staff. But what was said in regard, when you talk about former council people, they weren't here, has nothing to do with what we're doing here. We've been criticized for a lot of things. Some of it is justifiable, but when it's not justifiable, I think this council has to answer, and has to answer publicly. So there was no loss of sewer plant under my leadership, and had nothing to do with Bell, don't know the people, don't even know what that was about. So, so it happened, it shouldn't happen, and I will ask every one of you, if you hear these things, and you have any questions whatsoever, certainly there's somebody in the city you trust, even if it's an employee, call them, ask them, ask for proof or ask for the information, because we don't need to have these kind of false rumors in the public. We just don't.
The unfortunate part of all, Madam, if it's unfortunate or not, it's our Constitution. Anybody can sit up here and say anything they want to say, and when you're sitting on the dais, it's not even slander, it's not libel, you just say whatever you want to say. And we know from two years of experience with Ms. Gomez, that if it comes to her brain, she says it. She doesn't care if there's any truth to it, she doesn't care if there is support, proof, evidence, none of that matters. If she thinks it, she says it. I think the saddest part is that her objective for the last two years is clear to me, and it ought to be clear to anybody who's been here paying attention, she wants to do damage. She just wants to damage people, the city, council members, staff. That's, that is the result of everything she's done, so after a while, you begin to realize that's the intention behind everything. I want to do damage, I want to cause as much harm as I can. And the amount of time, energy, attention that she has drained from particularly our executive staff, because the city manager will no longer allow her to talk to people actually doing work in this city, he's got to deal with all of it, but what she's drained from him and the rest of our, the city manager's department, it's just incredible. It's just, it's just incredible. But hey, it's America. This is America.
Okay, so what's the decision? Do we turn this over to the grand jury and/or the DA, or what are we going to do about it?
I'd like to make my own comments as well. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, you and Joanne Elman have connections with Robert Rizzo. If you recall, the Golden Triangle acquisition, and that's not a lie. My responses are valid, and they stand. The city is trying to build a case, and so when I get censured, and I get the attorney appointed to me, I will be subpoenaing the affected businesses and the individuals who have come to me to tell me of these regards that I have stated. I made sure that none of the people and none of the businesses were named publicly. Why did I do that? Because I know, just as the public knows, that there's this thing called selective code enforcement, intimidation, and fear. A lot of us community members have gone through it, and we know it. So you do as you please, and these are my comments for this item. Thank you.
As we move on? No, there's nothing, there's nothing here. I don't, I don't want to lose credibility with the district attorney and the grand jury. I think when some real accusation is made, that's so patently false that if there can be enforcement, we do it, but not until then. Now, I suggest we move on.
So at this time, no action taken?
Action called for, Madam Mayor, to receive.
Well, she, Ms. Gomez should be grateful that, that's your opinion, and Mr. Kennedy's. You're being very gracious. So I guess we continue being attacked and ridiculed, and I don't know what else to say, but it's very discouraging. So, no action taken. Now we go on to public comments. And I do have some cards. I'm not able to read this.
Oh, Manuel Muzcas.
What is it?
Hello, thank you, Mayor. It's Manuel Muzcas, I'm sure you all remember it, over the next few, I guess, couple months, thirty days at least, for sure. But I just wanted to use this three minutes just to talk a little bit about, mostly importantly, talk to those at home who are watching this live, who, like myself, don't like to come to these meetings because of the energy that we constantly get, just happened five seconds ago, and then when we have paid protesters, it's kind of embarrassing. But I had a PowerPoint that I wanted to show you guys, but clearly, we're not able to do that right away, which, again, a reason why we need the millennials to step in to actually do the things, because this would have taken twenty-four seconds to plug in. But a quote that Malcolm X says, "If you're not careful, the media will have you hating the people who are being oppressed and loving the people who are doing the oppressing." And that's clear, that happens here in this courtroom, okay? So I just wanted to really bring out, I wanted to speak actually on the last topic, Ms. Gomez. We're constantly talking about her, but there's so much more that we can talk about. I'm new to politics, okay, guys? So I really didn't know that we were going to be talking about council members. I thought we were going to be coming in here talking about the working poor, thought we were going to be talking about war, thought we were going to be talking about fixing those things, you know? When it comes to war, we don't really, you know, I don't know who else we're supposed to talk this to, I thought it was local government. Are we, are we local government, right? So I thought it was us figuring these situations out, on the local level at least, but, you know, when it comes to something like war, it could happen to us at any moment, but instead, we are constantly just picking on each other, it seems like. Some other thing, again, I'm just going to bring a lot of things that I believe we should be talking about to the light. The two-party system that we have here in the United States is clear that it happens here in local, that majority of people are Democrat or Republican, which is the problem that we have in politics. It's time we start educating our people properly and informing them on how to get out of the situations which the Democrat Republicans have put us into. Another thing, I had, as I was out door knocking, because it's, you know, in a grassroots campaign that I'm in, that's what, the hard work has to be done, I met a lot of people, actually one couple, who is sitting here watching us live right now, because they came to talk about their daughter being human trafficking from the city, but they...
You have thirty seconds.
Oh, I didn't get to explain a lot, but real quick, human trafficking is a problem, we need to fix it. Mental illness, as our friends brought up, is a big issue, not just on council, but across the city and across the room, actually, for the most part. So I think it's our job as council members, and as council, and as the city, and government, to do our job in taking care of people, which is the only reason we are up, you guys are up there, is because you are elected to take care of our people and to handle our city properly.
Your three minutes are up.
Please start taking care of people properly and do what's best. And again, I am your guys, it's only millennial running for city council here in Victorville. We are six, fifty percent millennials, it's time we are represented, and it's time the minorities, which are clear in this room, get out of the way, and it's not okay to not just be, it's not okay to not be racist, it's time to be anti-racist, okay, guys? Thank you.
Maggie Martin, after Maggie, Al Cotello.
Hi again, counsel, Maggie Martin, Victorville, Your Honor. You know, I'm just looking right at you, but I'm talking about her, which is unfortunate, that that's what the majority of the council meetings are about, her, her, and more her. I'm kind of at the end of my rope with the, with the whole, whole thing. I really just don't, there's just almost nothing left for me to say regarding her. So what I'm going to do instead, is I'm going to let law enforcement speak for me, I'm going to let the court speak for me, I'm going to let the grand jury speak for me, or the DA, because she's not listening. She never has since damn day one. She doesn't listen to anything anyone says. She's a runaway train on a one-way path, and she sits up here and whines about how she doesn't get cooperation from the council. Everything she's getting is everything she deserves, because she brought it on herself. Came in here thinking she knew so much more than any of you, me, them, him, them, whoever else. Thirty-nine years old, it must be so great to be so smart. And you know what the end result at the bottom of this is going to be, and I would like to look at her, but I just can't bring myself to do it, so I'm looking right at you, Madam Mayor, is, in about ten, fifteen, twenty years, when she's grown up, she's going to look back on her tenure on this council with shame and regret, when she realizes what a jackass she made out of herself in front of God and everybody. Thank you.
Al Cotello. I'm not sure if he's here, evidently he left. Ramiro Rodriguez.
You know, it's, they criticize Blanca for a lot of things, but in all due respect, she's one of us up there asking all these questions. We want to know what's going on, that's all. We want to know, I know for a long time, nobody questioned nothing, everything was pass and go, I agree, I agree, yea, 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 no nays. It's fine, but now, times have changed, people have changed, the needs of the city have changed, and this city is not all about... And this city is not all about business. It's also about the citizens and the needs of its citizens, and the needs of the people here in the city, not about business, what they're going to think about the city, about business, what, everything. You know what? All the cities have their, their quarrels. Well, they, they discussed about him, or Rizzo, or whatever, doesn't matter. If it, you know, if it, if it doesn't suit you, so what? You know what? Somebody else's problem. But the thing is, right now, we really have to understand that the thing is that she's asking questions, and we want it to be answered. So when she answers the questions, I know it takes a long time, you guys are used to getting out of here at six forty-five, but all the questions she's asking, they serve us, because we know how the wheels turn. And there's a lot of people up there watching, that are looking pretty soon, that, that want to sit up there too, and see, you know what? Maybe I can do a better job. Maybe, you know what? Those people were not represented. So we want to wake the people up. Well, first, they laugh at you, Blanca, then they threaten you. But you know what? You end up winning. I know this, this dumb recall of what, the Jim Crow laws, I think they still have them here, that it's illegal for a Mexican person to film a, a funeral across city lines or something like that? Is that, is that what it's all about? That's, that's the main thing I, I heard about, that's what they're doing. When they come up here and, and talking online, those cities, everybody from over there, that's all they mention. And then you went to some other city, and supposedly, we're talking about, uh, not being a sanctuary city, which is against the will of the people here in Victorville. You know what? I don't really care. But that's, that's all they have. That's it. And then they, and you know what? And then, one, one other thing, there's no official language of the United States. There isn't. And you think I want to assimilate and become a joke and a laughingstock for the other people? That's not being assimilation, that's being a disgust.
You have thirty seconds?
Constitution doesn't even mention the language. But all in all, we're all here, we're shaking things up, and it's going to get worse. We have a lot more refugees coming down, up here to the city. And you think Hispanics are going to be a large, uh, population? Wait, wait. You're going to miss us.
Christine Pepper Blakely, and after Christine, Valentin Godina? Please?
Good evening. You can call me Pepper. I don't know if you guys remember, but I was here a year ago, and I told you we were going to vote you out, and sweetheart, two years you're going. I have a question, and I'd like to answer it, please. It's directed to you, Mr. Cox. Did we pawn the golf course approximately twenty, uh, thirty years ago for a twenty-seven million dollar loan? Yes or no?
I have no idea what you're talking about.
Uh, yes, you do. You were the city manager at that time, and to my rec, uh, to my sources, it told me, we pawned, took a loan out on the golf course, and we didn't pay it back, and that's why we can't do anything with the golf course. That's true.
What you're saying is totally false, and I'd be more than happy to sit down.
Okay, I got that, I got that information from somebody running for school board. He put that out at a Democratic picnic, and said that the, the golf course was put out for a loan, twenty-seven million dollar loan, years ago, and that's why we can't do anything with it. You can check into that, Ms. Gomez, you're a city council member. We have a very large Hispanic population in this city. If we can't translate for those that speak English, we're not serving our community, city council members. If somebody was in here deaf and couldn't hear, and we wouldn't translate for them, you're not serving your residents of Victorville. How many blacks council members have you had up here? Who represents the black community up here? What about the gay community? How can you represent your representatives if you don't have a black, gay? Who represents us? I tell you who needs to go. You, 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 you. All of you need to go, if you don't represent all of your residents of Victorville. This is not a diverse city council. It's just that simple. You represent one people and one people only, from what I see, the make America great people, and that is wrong. You should represent all of your citizens of Victorville. And had you not looked around, we're very diverse in this city. Had you not noticed, we're black, we're white, we're Chinese, we're Vietnamese, we're all people of Victorville. You should represent all of us. You people have lost your way. You take care of yourselves, and you don't worry about us, and don't you dare say what we vote for you do, because we voted to legalize cannabis, and you people went behind closed doors and banned it. You are on a board that I had at a meet and greet thirty years ago, on a Victorville board game as city manager, and you're still sitting there.
You have thirty seconds?
You need to go, you need to go, you need to go. We need a whole new board, and trust and believe, the city will get right. The reason businesses don't want to come here is because you guys are crooks. Keep it real. This guy has told me that Victorville is a big city. Oh, it is, with four other cities connected to it, it might be a big city, but sweetheart, Victorville is a little city with big city problems, and it starts right here.
Your three minutes are up. Time is up.
Thank you. You have a great day.
Valentin, I will have you removed if you don't settle down, so please settle down. Valentin Godina?
City council, you asked for courtesy in decorum, but yet, you're the first ones to, to break that and incite the whole population. You allow that jackass of a coconut to come in with stupid-ass signs, inciting everybody, and you do nothing about it. How can you ask for decorum and courtesy when you incite everybody? You are at fault, every one of you. You caused divisions, you caused the public to be divided by that jackass with freedom of speech. That's not freedom of speech, that's inciting riots and inciting the people. Freedom of speech has responsibilities. You have responsibilities to stop that, but you don't, because you like it. Who's next? What other candidate is next on his agenda? Which one of you, uh, tells him which one to go after? I can guess it's Pepper now. When are you going to be responsible and hold a professional meeting with decorum?
Deanne, uh, De? After Deanne, Raoul Rodriguez?
Good evening. My name is Deanne Delene. I'm a citizen of Victorville, and I do have some, well, I can't get the questions answered. I'm not supposed to do that, according to the Brown Act. I'm a student of the Brown Act, and there's one person in this room who just ripped the Brown Act apart, the early part of the meeting, and that was Gomez. She was starting to yell at the people in the audience, and she has no right to do that. And of course, everybody noticed she was running a video of people who were talking up here. She has no right to do that. Yes, anybody can write the, um, district attorney in California, because we are one state that has the Brown Act, and we can do that. The Brown Act also supersedes any California law. I know this because my parents worked on the Brown Act in nineteen fifty-three, when I was a pre-teen, and they told my brother and myself what it was all about. I am so happy that they did that, because now, when I get in front of a city council or a school board, even of a hospital board, everybody's supposed to do the Brown Act. They're supposed to follow it, and I do not think she read the Brown Act, or she would not be acting like this. Another thing, Gomez, you need to go back to school and learn how to read and comprehend what you're reading. I taught for forty-seven years, and I finally figured it out. When I've listened to you ask questions, you were all over the page, you made no sense. And I had people grow, when I was teaching, I used to teach children after school in different parts of where I was living, and I had older people come to me and say, "How can I remember what I read and totally understand it?" The only way you can do that is to read it over and over and over, and it's a lot of work, I know.
You have thirty seconds?
I think it was in fourth grade, when I had a fourth-grade teacher sit down with me and said, "You got to read it over and over and over if you don't remember what you read." It's as simple as that. Thank you.
Raoul Rodriguez, and after Raoul, April Pinkston?
You know, we should have a lot of races behind me. They just made a remark, remark, there's another one.
Okay.
Can you please throw them out? No. Not when I'm speaking. This is my time.
Please don't do that, Valentin.
Okay, I'd like to share something with you folks. In the last election in June, I was a candidate for Secretary of State, and I ran third. I got three hundred and eighty thousand votes, and I plan on running again, and I plan on winning. And the reason why I'm bringing this up is because we have an individual by, by the name of Valentin Godina, who is a liar. At the last meeting, he made a remark that I, or his, a member of his family, was the one that stole my sign, while it was him. We have witnesses, we have security guards that saw him do it. He is a liar. Not only is he a liar, but he's a thief, he's a lawbreaker, and he's a criminal. Please do not vote for this individual. He doesn't belong up there with you, people of, who are up there trying to represent the city of Victorville, except for Blanca. She should be out. Now, it's important that you remember, citizens of Victorville, do not vote for a criminal, a lawbreaker, and a thief. His name is Valentin Godina. He is a criminal, remember that. Do not vote for this individual, he doesn't belong up there with you. Please remember this. Another thing, we have an election coming up in November. It's time, let's turn California red. Let's have a red wave. Yes, a red wave in California. Let's get rid of the Democrats. They're destroying not only California, but they're destroying the United States of America. They don't know what it is to have morals or values. They are terrible. They need to learn that this is America. We have a constitution.
You have thirty seconds?
We have. Our, the language is English for the, for, you should read the Constitution for California. That is what's stated. English is the official language, so you need to assimilate, you need to learn the language. And if you can't do that, go back to school. If not, you know where you can go. And it, it isn't in the United States of America. Thank you very much. God bless America, and God bless Donald Trump.
Your three minutes are up?
Yes, yes.
Your time is up. April Pinkston?
I think I wrote, I wore the right color.
Can we have some silence back there, please? Can we have silence? Uh, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, I just want to come up here again, and has nothing to do with, um, what's her name up there? I want to say is that I appreciate the city listening to its constituents, because the music ordinance, you guys have gone around and sent out a flyer, um, to people door-to-door, sending out a flyer in regards to enforcing the music ordinance. And it's my understanding that that same flyer is going to go out in the water bills in the next month or so, and I greatly appreciate that. And the only thing that I would like to further suggest is that more code enforcement officers are hired, so that the music ordinance is actually enforced. And I just, again, I just want to say thank you very much, Sophie, and whoever else, and Eric, for, and whoever else was involved in getting it on the agenda. I greatly appreciate it, because there's nothing like the sound of silence. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Those were all the cards that I have, so now we move on to reports from our city manager.
Madam Mayor, and members of the council, uh, we do have a couple of events coming up that we, staff, um, in the city are very proud of, and is very positive for our community, so we're looking forward, uh, to kicking things off this Friday, October fifth, uh, and Saturday, October sixth, which is our seventeenth annual, uh, fall festival. Um, and as it, uh, started last year by expanding into Friday, we're going to continue to do that. It's going to be a couple of days of, uh, live entertainment, uh, children's, children's rides, food booths, vehicle displays. Uh, it's our largest event of the year, uh, that we sponsor, so, uh, should be, um, a lot of excitement, certainly invite all those, uh, from the community out. Uh, then on Saturday, uh, October thirteenth, we've got a winterizing workshop, uh, from ten to twelve, uh, ten in the morning to twelve in the afternoon. Here at Victorville City Hall, Conference Room D, there's no charge, uh, it's open to Victor Valley residents, co-hosted by the MWA, and it's an opportunity to learn weatherization techniques to conserve energy, water, and prevent costly repairs, um, as, as the season changes upon us. Uh, then finally, October thirteenth, same day, eight to twelve, City Hall, pet licensing, low-cost vaccination clinic, and adoption event. That's all I have.
Thank you. Now we move on to discussion and possible action regarding items for the upcoming city council agenda. I'll start with Mr. Kennedy.
No, I don't have anything.
Ms. Gomez?
So I want to make a motion to override the city manager's authority by council majority to allow me to continue my monthly meetings with each department head on at least one day a month, to become aware of all these city projects, all these city business-related events that are going on, and any inquiry about public goods and services without the physical presence of the city manager. That's my motion.
Is there a second? There being no second, the motion dies.
Anyone else? Are you done? Anyone else? Okay, now we move on to reports from council members, uh, three-minute, uh, time limit. I'll start with Ms. Gomez.
So I get compliments by the city attorney stating that my syntax, my semantics, and my vocabulary usage are all provided by external assistance with knowledge of city operations, so thank you. I would like to publicly share with the public that my attempts were worth a try, to motion to add items of interest that, that would affect us when it comes to emergency disaster preparedness in our territories or nearby. Although it was ignored by the council, by the city manager and the city attorney, I want to emphasize that as the city, that as your city council member, your voice and your vote, I am, I am diligently continuing to work on mitigating with this city the financial and the social effects that natural disasters have on affected communities like ours, how the emergency alert system and the wireless emergency alert systems are used, and how other communities and other communication tools are available during an emergency, and they are able to be disseminated to disseminate any information to the public. I will continue to ask the city council, the city attorney, and the city manager of the importance it is for us to openly have discussions related to mass evacuations that deal with well-coordinated plans to save the, to save the maximum amount of... deal with well-coordinated plans to save the, to save the maximum amount of lives, continue the discussions on multi-jurisdictional coordination and key elements to consider before, during, and after a mass evacuation comes upon us. Any considerations that needs, needs to be taken into account in a mass evacuation that are specifics to vulnerable communities, like the elderly, disabled, and the homeless populations. I will continue to knock on the doors of current deaf council members, the city attorney, and the city manager in relation to emergency planning and preparedness for healthcare facilities, asking how our local centers for Medicare and Medicaid services are emergency-prepared, how I as a policymaker can support and work with local healthcare facilities to be emergency-ready for you, how we, your local government, Victorville, has to adopt, how we've adopted land use, planning in our jurisdiction to mitigate plans, and how we have strategized for funding mitigation plans and strategies. City manager, please know that today, I have put you on notice as to my desires to investigate and to sit down with the appropriate department heads to understand, to evaluate, to become aware of our size involvement in the affirmation elements, just name. Let me know through email and a hard copy in my box, when these possible dates to sit down before the next council meeting is, so we can have this discussion and be more apprised and ready for our citizens if we have flash floods or any kind of emergencies.
Well, before I adjourn the meeting, I just want to say that I am very disappointed, in a sense, and yet, I am very proud of Mayor Pro Tim Jim Cox and council member Jim Kennedy. It just goes to show you the professionalism here, you know? Anyone else would have been just so ready to submit all this information to the grand jury and the DA. It can still be done by the public, it doesn't necessarily have to be council members. These accusations are so damaging to all of us, and there's no reason for it, there's no grounds for it. I don't even know why Ms. Gomez comes up with all this crazy ideas, but it's slander and defamation of character, and I feel very offended by it. It's not hurting me, it's not hurting Mr. Cox, and it's not hurting Mr. Kennedy, because people know who we are, where we have been, what we have done, and where we are now. I wish I could say the same about Gomez. This meeting is adjourned.